So the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for March 25th.
Twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 25th, 2024.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, four to zero, minutes are approved. All right, next item on the agenda is the, any committee reports from the board members?
I'll make a quick committee report, Mr. Chairman. So June 4th, I attended the NEMCOG, it's called the Home in Greater Lowell Strategy Summit. And, you know, NEMCOG, for those of you that don't know, it's a regional planning board that encompasses Pepperell, Dunstable, Tinsborough, Drakeett, Lowell, Westford, Chelmsford, Tewksbury, and Billerica. And, you know, a lot of chatter, as many of those things are. But, you know, some statistics that we all need to be reminded about here, that, you know, there is a, an increase year over year in homelessness in the region. And that's, that's in all, every town in the NEMCOG region, just something for us all to be thinking about here. And there's also a consistent gap between the number of units available and the number of units needed. Construction remains focused on single-family homes in our region. It, you know, it's, the number of permits for single-family homes greatly outweighs the permits for multiple dwelling units. The share of homeowners, you know, I mean, I could go on and on and on with the statistics, and I won't do that. I would just defer anybody that's interested in more information to go to NEMCOG.com, or is it .org? .org, I'm sorry. And, and take a look at some of the, some of the information they have on there. And one of the tough ones is for, you know, some of us that have children that are growing up in the area, is that the share of homeowners in the age group 25 to 44 years has decreased since the year 2000, pretty substantially, by about 10% maybe. So, but yet the percentage of homeowners aged 65 and over has increased. So that tells you that people that are, you know, over 65, many instances, we're staying where we are, which is true in my case and probably others. And that sort of kind of feeds into the problem. But we do have a need for housing to support workers and people that are working in the businesses and industries in our region. People aren't going to drive two and three hours to commute for, for, you know, an average paying job. You know, they're going to, so, you know, people generally like, need to live in the vicinity where they work. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Check out NEMCOG.org and for further information. And that's just something that we as a planning board need to always, I think, keep in the back of our minds as far as what's available, you know, what's coming down the pike for potential housing and affordable housing.
Great. So Mr. Duffy, was there any recommendations for them, what they're recommending to happen in different communities and towns?
They really don't, when, when we finish up those things, we actually made, you know, we kind of broke off into, into groups, and we actually made some recommendations. And, you know, there's a, there's a bit of a, a lot of pushback, as we may have seen some of it in a recent town meeting. You know, one of my suggestions was to, you know, and not just that NEMCOG should do, but maybe the state should have done, is, is be more visible with, with their rollouts of any potential projects that might, you know, because, you know, so that it doesn't end up with a negative, a negative, you know, view by the residents. So no, no real, no real recommendations, to be honest with you.
Good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Nothing here.
Oh, so moving on, agenda item B2, Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple items we have, not two, we actually have four new public hearings scheduled for our July 15th meeting. 1699 Shawshin Street is another Dunkin' Donuts location coming for an electronic message board sign. 34 Lanega Road coming for a family suite special permit. The remand hearing for 1879 Main Street, the satellite parking lot for Treehouse, and 118 Lumber Lane, which is going to be a request for a use special permit for a flooring warehouse use. Next item, the YMCA of Greater Lowell is offering a variety of week-long summer camp programs, including outdoor rec programs, basketball camp, and all sports camp. Residents of the town of Tewksbury do not need to be YMCA members to register for these programs. And this initial offering will have five one-week programs from July 8th through August 9th. The registration link will redirect to the YMCA's online portal dedicated to Tewksbury residents. And the registration links may be found at tewksbury-ma.gov/tewksburyymca, all one word. And last note here, just to piggyback on Mr. Duffy's comments here, the Northern Middle Sex Council of Governments, NEMCOG, is also working on a digital equity plan for the region, a plan to improve residents' access to internet, technological devices like smartphones and computers, and education about how to use digital tools. To inform the plan, they want to hear from folks and their experiences with technology. And this will improve the region's plan for improving digital equity. Our municipalities and community organizations will have access to more funding to provide services, technology, and education. And folks can find that survey at NEMCOG, N-M-C-O-G dot O-R-G slash digital equity. And that's all from me.
Okay. So along the lines of the YMCA summer camps, do we have any numbers as far as, are there people signing up for them or not, or where are we as far as numbers?
So the last registration numbers that I saw were early to mid last week, and there were still about 20 spots in each of those week-long camps. So highly encourage residents to register their children for those. I believe it's about $225 per week, which really beats even some of the more competitive daycares and day camps in the area, so.
Sure.
And those camps run 8 to 4 PM, Monday through Friday.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to agenda item C, 1563 Andover Street. Anybody here for that? So when you guys get ready, give us your names for the record.
Mira Cousins with Civil Design Consultants.
And Stephen Lawrenson.
So it's my understanding that at the last meeting, the board requested someone from our office to be here today. So I'm the lucky one. I'm here today to go over the updates on this project. So we prepared a site plan to address the runoff flowing onto North Street. We designed an underdrain system that'll intercept runoff from the patios located at the rear of Building 4 and the surrounding landscaped area. And that would all get discharged into the wetlands off-site towards the south of the property. So we received a review letter from DPW on Thursday of last week. It was a clean letter. We've addressed all their comments. Also, the landscape architect revised the landscaping plan, and that was also submitted to you. So with that, happy to take any questions.
Okay, great. Board members, Mr. Champa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So our last meeting, we saw a lot of changes to the landscape, some due to the patios, some which weren't, I mean, some changes that happened that I had a hard time, and I didn't really hear an explanation how they were tied in with the patios. And so my hope, and not my instructions, but my guidance at the last meeting was, everything from the original plan that could be put back in should be put back in. And then if a change is requested, then we could look at like what the proposed design would be, so that we're, could pivot away from the asking for forgiveness model, and then, you know, looking for, we've met the original intent to the fullest extent possible. We have some reasons why we'd like to make these other changes. So in comparing this plan, I'm looking at the landscape plan to the previous landscape plan, definitely more trees are back, which is great.
Actually, there's more than the original amount of plantings on there. There's more trees, plantings now than there was on the original plan.
So generally, and I didn't do a count, so I'll, I'll take your word for it.
Well, that's the landscaper telling me that, so I could, I didn't count either.
So one of my original questions was, you know, the patios are of varying shapes and sizes for each of the buildings. And I was curious why we didn't just, or not why we, but why you didn't work within just sort of the minimum size you needed for the patio, but you went larger with the patios, which then infringed on some of the landscaping?
Well, we took what we had. We went over this in the last meeting, the same thing, that we kind of went with what we had with, to make it as livable in the back. I mean, if you have a small patio and it all fenced in, it just doesn't make sense. The way it looks now is, it's nice. There's not a person that goes by there, there's not a compliment I don't get. And I know it's not the board's, it wasn't their intention when they approved it, it's how it flowed into it. But you're not going to look at one of those patios and say, my God, they should have made these smaller and put a tree here, because there's plenty of trees and there's plenty of landscaping around them. And, and it looks beautiful. You know, if you knew the amount of calls I got after this meeting, I didn't even know anybody watched these things, but they did.
Yeah, they did.
They watched them, and they called me, and they complimented me on how beautiful the place looks, as, because they went by there for years, and they saw the house at the corner, and it looked like a horror show, and the other ones didn't look much better, just nobody lived in them. So when we had a chance to make it more livable for somebody, and you can see there's families in there, there's three bedrooms, there's families, those big patios make a big difference. Those kids go outside, they're safe, and it just, we moved the plantings around. I mean, granted, it wasn't the way it should have been done, but if you look at it now, and you can see what the landscape plan is, I think it's pretty good. I mean, I just do.
Okay. One question I have is, the, the rear egress onto those patios, do those fences have gates or anything?
No.
So if, if there were a fire and someone had to leave through the back, where would they go once they got to the patio?
Through the fence, I guess, yeah. I mean, there's no gate on them, because we wanted to ensure the privacy in between the units and not outside, have somebody walk in from the street. I mean, I guess you could lock them.
I just, I'm just thinking back to the original impetus of why there's a second egress. And I'm assuming that's usually for emergencies. So if there's an emergency and the building happened to be on fire, in one of the four units, or three units, depending on which building you're in, when they get back there...
Yeah, that makes sense.
I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure, I don't have an elevation in front of me to know how high that wall is back there, but I believe you said the fence was either six or seven feet high?
That's six, I believe. Is it six?
Six feet high.
Yeah.
So, so that's a concern of mine.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what your thought would be to address that. I like what you did with the front, I liked it better with the finger islands between the units, but I like having the walkways there, I think that's a nice touch.
And it's more practical, too, when you think of the finger islands, like the landscape architect was saying, a lot of times they do these, and the practicality of them, people watering them and keeping them up, it doesn't look like it does on the plan. But these boxes, planters, they seem to take care of them much better. And, and for snow removal, too, it's the same thing. It's a pain, I guess they're a pain in the neck to work around.
We've heard, we've heard. So I guess basically, my only real concern at this point is, is safety in terms of what happens to somebody if they're in those rear patios in terms of emergency. Generally, the rest of this, I mean, I wasn't here at the time, but I probably would have been okay with most of what I see here, if we had known then what you discovered throughout the construction process, and, and had an architect that knew about the requirement for a second egress. That's all my comments for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Mr. Lozot?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I mean, kind of similar, similar concerns. Happy to see that there's more landscaping now. I'm bouncing between the, the previously submitted, or the original landscape plan and this one, and, you know, it looks, looks like about the best that we can, can do here. And so just another question, kind of on the sidewalks at the front. So are these sidewalks with two planters kind of flanking them, is that what it is? Is that what the little black boxes are?
Correct, yes, on either side of that paper walkway.
Glad to see the, again, the clean letter from engineering. And it sounds like you're guys taking another pass at the knot we, in the back, is that what the plan there is?
Yeah, well, it's going to be removed, and then there's a, it's not a top, it's a, whatever that...
Sort of netting or?
Yeah, something that confines it to...
All right. Yeah, I mean, I think that addresses everything that I had, you know, again, just kind of the similar feedback. If you'd come to us earlier, this would have gone a lot easier.
A hundred percent.
You know, for projects in the future.
Yes.
That would be the recommendation. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of quick things. I see that you installed the detectable warning panel at the corner of North. Is that the one that they had the concern about?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's in place and completed, or?
Yes, yeah, that was recently installed.
He likes to show that picture, if you could just...
That's okay. So another thing, too, just to address Mr. Champa's comments, and, and, you know, we can check the building, but I'm reasonably sure that the code only requires you to have in a, I forget exactly what it's called, but maybe like an escape area. You know, like a lot of apartment buildings, they just have a little balcony with a railing on it, you know, outside the slider. And that constitutes a, a second egress that gives a waiting area until, until Friday Department of Rescue can get there. And I'm pretty sure that that, you know, because I'm thinking of those things that gates on them, it's probably more likely that somebody's going to come in and then, then go out. That's just my, my personal thought on that. I think building might want to, Alex may want to just confirm that with building. So that's, you know, in, in those things, I'm, the, you know, the patios and so on and so forth, I'm pretty, pretty comfortable with, but here's my, a couple of my concerns here. You, instead of installing the stone wall, I don't know how many linear feet that is, because it doesn't really say that on the plan, on the, on Detail A. I can't really tell how long that is altogether. But I can tell you this, it's pretty, pretty long. It's several hundred feet. And, and, you know, I'm looking at the elevations, you know, the starting elevation is 232.86. The next elevation of the pipe is, if I'm seeing that right, is 232.9, which means that there's a little uphill there. Now, granted, it's a six-inch pipe, and that, I'm sure DPW took a look at that and figured that that was okay. But you're running that drain pipe, it looks to me like within inches of an underground electrical there. So, and right behind the existing patios. So what's the plan for excavating that?
So in terms of the elevation that you just listed, that's the...
You know, I can't really, could you pull the mic a little closer, please?
Sure. The elevations that you were talking about, that's the top of the crushed stone, that's not the pipe elevation. So it's eight inches of cover over the pipe. And that's in the detail that we have here. And then in terms of the electrical line...
Where is the top of the crushed stone in relation to the top of the pipe? It's pretty darn close to it, generally.
It'll be, yeah, eight inches above the pipe, and that's between the back of fence and the edge of patio. There's about a foot and a half between the two, and that's where that underdrain will be installed.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, foot and a half, that's 18 inches.
Yeah.
And somewhere in that 18 inches is an underground electrical that you guys have to negotiate around.
It's on the other side of the fence, that electric line. And we put a note that the contractor will have to verify that.
Okay. Here's, here's my main concern with that. And I know DPW thinks it's okay, on paper it looks great, looks like the water's going to run from one end to the other. But what I see there is a pipe that's virtually flat, with very little pitch, 232.8, and then you can add maybe another 50 feet, it's 232.5. We're talking three tenths of an inch there, not very much. And then down to 332, or 232.3. Until you get to the, to the cleanout, you're not dropping more than three quarters of an inch. And, and you're crossing, it's, in that area, you're crossing a gas line, that we don't have an elevation on that. So any little bump up or down in that, all I don't want to do is hand the future residents of that place a pipe that they're going to have to have Wayne's drains down there, you know, every three months, clearing it up. And that's what I envision there. So that being said, what I would like to see, if you are amenable to this, is, is a stamped engineer drawing of the finished elevations as built, to go along with this. And then, and in that case, I'd be, I'm happy with everything else, if you guys can be agreeable to that. Just to verify that we're going to get some flow in that pipe.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, and just to be clear, there is a pitch on that pipe.
Fair enough?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not talking a lot, you guys dig a trench, you put a pipe in, you know, you shoot some grades, you know, you guys stamp it, and...
Are you saying that would be captured in the final as-built, or prior to?
That, that doesn't matter to me, whether it's on the finals or...
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Yeah. I mean, for your own benefit as well, you guys own that for a year anyways, right? After the, after everything's all said and done, after occupancy, so, I mean, you don't want anything happening to that pipe. Let's make sure that water's going to go all the way. It's only, it's only an armful of riprap on the other end, that's going to, on the drainage end of that. And, you know, I, I just don't want the, the future homeowners to be owning, you know, taking over a problem, that a stone wall wouldn't have been that problem. You know what I'm saying? So here we are, we're going to be okay with installing a drain pipe. DPW is okay with it, and, but I just want to make sure that that pipe goes in exactly how it says it is on the plan. Okay?
Sounds good, yep.
All right, thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Mr. Duffy. So I was by the site, and the site looks great.
Thank you.
I do like the site, where, where it came out. I did have some concerns. So, Ms. Cousins, how much of the plans have changed from when we initially approved it to now?
So the patios, right?
Patios, I understand, patios.
Patios, walls that weren't built, right, according to the plans. Those were the, and the island dividers between the units.
He's got a question behind him.
Also, the fire department came there, I can't remember his name, but...
Excuse me, one second, if you're going to speak, I just need you to go to the microphone so we can capture it, thank you.
Your name for the record, please?
Philip Rienzi, I'm the builder and the owner. The fire department came, and they wanted us to put stations on the sides of the buildings, which were never on the original plans. And going to those, I call them doghouses, they would, wanted concrete or something so they could be shoveled, so the firemen didn't have to walk. So that was another big thing that took away a lot of landscaping, too, so. But that was the fireman, I can't recall his name.
Is that the FOP door that's there on the side, right?
Yes, that was never on the original plans.
Okay.
So that was something else that the fire department, I forget his name, but the guy that's in charge of the...
Probably Mr. Sewicki.
Yes, it is. But he wanted those, and he wanted walkways, so the fire department guys didn't have to walk in snow to go. And that's where your, you know, your alarms are, you know, you're monitoring for all that stuff.
Yeah.
That's another change, that was never on the print.
Yeah, I seen them, I seen them when I went by the site.
I just, I thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Okay. All right, so what else, Ms. Cousins, just, just those two?
Patios, fencing, the firehouse on the sides of the building. I think those were the main ones.
Okay. So I have a couple of concerns being at the site, is, Mr. Champa mentioned the fence enclosure, being no gate. So, being at the site, I seen everyone's trash cans in front of the building, next to the front door as you're going to enter. Was that always in the plans?
The trash can location?
Recyclables and trash at the front door of every building when you walk in?
We never show that on the approved plan, but I think that was the idea, to have it at the end of the driveway for each unit?
Originally, when we did, those units would have dumpsters or another, but dumpsters create, not only are they ugly, they create a lot of problems in those type of units. It's much better to have each person have their own individual. And there is room, there's technically room in the garage where you could put the barrels. If someone wants to do that, I don't know, but that...
In my view of the place, when I went there, the barrels just took so much away from your buildings.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, every single unit has nowhere to put the barrels. I don't know if they'd fit in the garages. The garages are, another unit, I mean, another concern, the garages are so small, is that, did you shrink those garages down, or was that all part of the...
No, that's all, that's the original, everything's the original plan that was approved.
Really?
It would never, never altered or anything like that.
Because I would find it hard, living in that facility, with the barrels being in front of everything.
Mr. Vitale, I can provide a little bit of context here. So all ownership units are a part of the town's regular waste pickup. So as individually owned condominium units, they are entitled to the trash pickup by Republic Services. It's generally rental developments that have the dumpsters for the, or some other private means of removing waste, so.
I don't have a problem with that, Ms. Lozot, but the problem I have is that they're in front of, of every single building that's there.
Okay.
You know, I don't know if it bothers you guys as owners, but it bothered me as a, as a planning board member, saying, I don't think I would ever have approved the barrels locations for you having them next to the front door, with the smell and everything else as you walk in the buildings. And that, every single building had their trash out front, because first of all, they couldn't get into the patios, because there's no gates on them. If you had a gate on it, I could see the trash barrels being in the back, in, in the patio, and then when it's trashed there, you bring it out front. I mean, that would be an improvement, in, in my view, that would alleviate any, any concerns about, you know, access out of the building in case, if there's a fire there, and the ugly trash barrels being in front of the buildings, I mean.
It's funny, because it never, in all the years we were doing this, and we, I don't think that ever came up, I don't think it...
Well, because you had a dumpster.
Yeah, we didn't have one on the plan, but...
Well, that's why I asked you, if you, if there was a dumpster in the plans originally?
No, there was never a dumpster pad for this.
But I'm sure there was no, no, no allocation of the barrels being in front of the house, I think. I think that would have came up, as far as any planning board member seeing that. Because when I seen it today, I'm like, I'm like, gee, it's creepers, I don't know if I'd ever want to be living there with the trash barrels being there, present, and, you know, everyone takes care of the trash barrels differently. You know, I mean, my wife cleans my trash barrels weekly, so, I mean, she's unusual, but I mean, I can, that's one of my concerns. I mean, I don't know if you want to address that at all, but, or something you can do about that, or, I mean, I know it's not a requirement, but...
Well, we want to work with you, see, you know, what, what works best. I mean, this wasn't anything that was thought out, usually the, the other units that I've done that are over six, it has to be private pickup. So it usually would be, you know, the fact that these people, actually, the first set of barrels reordered was private. And then we realized the town, they were entitled to town services. Because it, it isn't a typical, for a condo unit to be with 18 units to have the right to town ownership, so. Yeah. I mean, if, if there was a, if there was a gate, or...
If there was a, if there was a gate in the back of the...
Yeah, why don't you start that again, so we can...
If there was a gate in the back of buildings one, two, and five, those two, those three buildings have retaining walls, so they would not be able to bring them back there unless you put a gate through each one. And I don't think the people really would want to be able to, you know, kids or anything to go through that way. But buildings one and two, on, on the, the patios, we followed the line of the retaining wall, that's why they're different sizes. And I told you, on building five, we encroached on wetlands, so we had to push them back five feet. But the original was, you know, we wanted to stick with a 15-foot, less than two sections of fence, to keep the cost down. And I don't know what else to say on that, but I mean, you got to remember, one, two, and five, they cannot put their barrels back there, because they drop off all, all those. So that, that wouldn't work for them.
Yeah.
I don't know what to say, I know I wouldn't want to put a trash barrel in my garage, because they stink. That, that, that's an issue, where to put them. I mean, I know some people are putting them on the rocks on the side, some people are putting them on the grass, but I, I can't tell...
I seen them on the side of the building as well, one house got them on the side.
Yes, yes, I, I got pictures of them on the side.
Ninety percent of the buildings, and they have them in the front.
Yes.
Next to the front door.
Right.
It just didn't look good for me, being...
No, it didn't look good, but that's, I mean, there was no dumpster pad there when we, we, we took this project on, so...
we, we, we took this project on, so, and I guess the town wants to, you know, pay for the trash and the, the owners don't mind not paying for dumpster fees.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know what to say.
And that's one of my concerns. So another concern I had was, there's a small parking spot next to unit eight. Is that, was that always in the plans? It's a one, it's a one parking spot?
Yeah, one.
And who uses that one?
This is...
Unit seven usually uses it.
But it's not designated for anyone.
Yeah, it's a, it's a parking spot.
Okay. Was that part of the original plans too? It just seems like we had one, one?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I, I also seen there was only one handicap spot for the entire prop, for the entire facility.
That was, that was the original on the plans.
It was? I would think that we, what we probably would have required more than one, being 18 units. Yeah. So that wasn't changed in the plans?
No, if you're going to continue to make comments, I need you to get on the microphone so they're recording. Because the recording secretary needs to collect it for the minutes.
I got a loud voice anyways.
Maybe you should stay there.
I'll bring my chair. But that's all we seen on the plan right there, that, 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 near the mailbox, you had the one handicap and then there's a handicap ramp for them to get up to their mailboxes and then a parking spot. That was all that was on the original plans.
Really?
I don't have the approved plan.
We can always throw another handicap. All you got to do is, we, we still have the sticker and all that.
I don't want you to do that unless you're required to, but it seems to me that maybe more than one allowed. I don't know, Alex, what do you think?
I would have to confirm in the original plans, but the previous building commissioner did review and I believe that the, only the one was required. Because it has to have the, the ramp there onto the sidewalk.
Yeah, I seen the ramp, the ramp is there.
Yes.
I seen the spot there, so, I mean, but...
Yeah, and it's got the line, so nobody can park there and let them get up there to get their mail.
So when you, when you drive in, those spots on the left are all visitor parking or they own a parking spot?
Yes, yes.
Visitor, because the owners have one inside and one outside.
Yeah, none of them park inside. Because if you parked inside, you definitely wouldn't be able to put your barrel, because that's the size that we built to.
I was just shocked at the size of the garage. I just thought maybe we should, maybe we should look at that as planning board members to make sure they're big enough to accommodate a barrel or something, but I don't think a big truck's going to fit in there at all.
Actually, you can't. I've seen them put them in, in the back, in the back and put their car and put barrels in.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you're not going to, you know, do a jumping jack in there, but it's, they do it.
Okay. All right. With that, I am all set, I think. Anybody else on the board have any comments or questions? No, so...
Mr. Fattali, I do have one clarifying question. The responsibilities for the maintenance of the drain pipe, is that something that's going to be included in the HOA documents just because prior they wouldn't have been maintaining the retaining wall the same way?
Right.
Yes, that'll have to be amended, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, anybody in the audience have any questions, comments, or concerns? Come up to the microphone, okay? Give your name for the record.
Yeah, my name's Sarah Rodewald. I'm actually an agent for one of the people that is in building four and I, I've lived in Somerville for many years and, so I understand the process very well and I've been doing this job for about 10 years. And I know that you guys have a process that you need to do, but phase one has been approved with all these changes and the building commissioner gave approval for that. So I hope whatever it is that you guys need done can be done with the as-built. So my client, who is living in Connecticut with their family waiting for the approval, can move into her house. She would really appreciate that. So she's been watching on the town meetings as well. You know, you guys are just doing your job and I'm sure there's a lot that you have to consider, but I would hope that at this point, you know, DPW has approved and I just hope you guys consider that there are other people on this, like really waiting to get into their homes. And it's a beautiful project. So the last thing I wanted to say, the trash issue, that sounds like an HOA issue, so if that's something that really you want to address, I would maybe bring it to the condo docs. Since phase two hasn't been registered yet, I would imagine that they could probably change that at those closings if that's really a concern. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chairman's in favor as well, so four to nothing. All right, so with that...
Hold the board, do you need, before the vote? Do you want to ask if...
Is everybody okay with the, with the, with the, everything going through here as far as, are there major concerns? Again, because they need, you guys need four of us to vote yes tonight, so just so you know that.
Right, so if there's any concerns, we'd like to...
Any concerns that people are going to be opposed to or something like that with, with